Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the January 19, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today, Clerk to the Board Tony Mayernick, County Council is Assistant County Council Nate Boderman. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Roberts Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. The first item is the Housing Authority Board Consent Agenda. If you would please convene as the Housing Authority.
I will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority for Clackamas County.
Joining you on Zoom is Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Anne, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
There. Welcome, Commissioner Leenstra. This is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda. One item: Approval of a Financial Assistance Application for the Family Unification Voucher Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Anticipated grant award is $370,000. Funding is through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Any discussion on this item? Any Commissioner wish to pull anything? Anne, I will accept a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda as read by the Clerk.
Second.
Anne Leenstra has moved to approve the Housing Consent Authority and has been seconded by Martha Schrader, Commissioner Schrader. Any other comments on this? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much, Anne, for attending.
You're welcome.
I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is a previously approved land use issue. It is adoption of a previously approved Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zone Change for Z-0354-22-CP and Z-0356-22-ZAP. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel, will present. Go ahead, please, Nate.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. As Gary mentioned, the item this morning is to adopt an order related to a proposed change to the county's comprehensive plan and zoning map on property located at 1 or near 14781 South Buckner Creek Road. Specifically, this order will include a comprehensive plan amendment from agriculture to forest and a corresponding zone change from exclusive farm use to timber. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this matter on November 14, 2022, and voted unanimously at that time to recommend that this board approve those amendments. The board then held a public hearing on this matter on December 14, 2022, to consider the application and the recommendation from the Planning Commission. At that meeting, this board voted four zero in favor of approving the application as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff. Board then directed staff to prepare findings and to draft an order to finalize that decision. So the order before you today will approve those amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map. Planning staff has included findings supporting this decision in the materials, and they're attached as an exhibit to the order. I will note that this application was heard last month, and Chair Smith, you were absent attending to other business. Commissioner West, that was obviously before you had been sworn in. So neither one of you is automatically disqualified from participating in the vote today, but unless you've reviewed the record and are prepared to vote, it'd be perfectly appropriate for you to abstain from the vote this morning. So, staff's recommendation that you adopt the order, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have pertaining to this particular application.
Thank you, Nate. I will remind the Board of County Commissioners, this will need to pass on a four oh vote. Now, I mean, a three oh vote. Nate, do we not called on to vote, or do we abstain?
I guess when you're called in the roll, you can abstain at that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any other questions regarding this land use approval? Hearing none, I will accept a motion.
I move we adopt previously approved Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zone Change for the Z-0354-22-CP and Z-0356-22-ZAP as previously approved at the December 14, 2022 Land Use Hearing.
A second?
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved we approve, we adopt previously approved Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Zone Change for Z-0354-22-CP and Z-0356-22-ZAP as previously approved at a December 14, 2022 Land Use Meeting. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
I'm abstaining because I was not involved in this process.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
I'll abstain. Motion passes three dash two dash zero, right? The abstentions and then the...
Three zero two.
Excuse me. The motion passes three zero two. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
All right, thank you. Next is the regular county consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda. Elected Officials. Item One: Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Human Resources. Item One: Approval of Amendment One to a Contract with Cascade Centers Incorporated Doing Business as Canopy Wellbeing for the Employee Assistance Program Services. Amendment Value is $204,970 for two years. Contract Value is increased to $419,970 for 4.5 years. Funding is through contributions and fees paid by county departments, retirees, COBRA beneficiaries, and other agencies contracting with Clackamas County for employee benefits administration, including $59,441 in budgeted county general funds. County Admin. Item One: Approval of a Funding Agreement with the Regional Arts and Culture Council for Funding and Services to Artists and Art Organizations in Clackamas County. Agreement Value is $62,000 for one year. Funding is through county lottery dollars. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development. Item One: Approval of a Board Order Vacating a Portion of Hemlock Drive, a Local Access Road. Vacation Fee is $1,139.18. Funding is through the petitioner. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services. Item One: Approval of Amendment One Increasing Funding and Duration of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Clackamas Fire District. Number One for COVID Support. Amendment Value is $25,000 for six months. Agreement Value is increased to $175,000 for 1.5 years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Two: Approval of a Financial Assistance Application for a Continuation Grant from Oregon Department of Transportation for Operations Funding of Mountain Hood Express. Anticipated Grant Value is $1,136,696 for two years with a match of $426,205. Funding is through federal pass-through grant funds, state funds, and private funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you very much. Is there any Commissioner wishing to remove anything from the consent agenda? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved for approval of the consent agenda. It's been seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Gary, what's next?
Next chair is the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. If you would please convene as that board.
I will recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board for the next agenda.
This is Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services. Item One: Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of West Lynn for Mapleton Pump Stationed Bi oxide Dosing. Agreement Value is $75,000 over 4.5 years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item Two: Approval of a Construction Contract with McClure &amp; Sons Incorporated for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility Primary Clarifier Rehabilitation Project. Contract Value is $5,424,730 for 3.25 years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item? I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved to approve the agenda for Water Environment Services. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Wow, we just zipped through that, folks. We are now at public communication, and we have a few blue cards up here if anybody wishes to speak at this moment. There's some sitting at the table, Tony. Please fill out a card. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of the Board of County Commissioners and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be courteous and respectful to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I have several blue cards here today. Up first is Eric Pfeifer Robinson. Sir, please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Just looking for the timer. So I'm Eric Pfeifer Robinson. I live in Canby. I've been there since 2017.
Could you pull the microphone closer? I did not hear that. I heard your name, and please continue.
Okay. Yeah, so I live in Canby. I live, I serve on the Clackamas County Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and have for about four years now, and on the Timber Sale Advisory Committee as well. So, let's see. I've got a few things, there's, you know, I can only say about 2% of what I might want to say. It's my first time in, so I'm a little nervous, and I don't want to be so cynical to believe that it's not worth coming in. So I'll try to follow the rules here. So parks, I want to talk about funding, you know, money. So we can't pass a bond to fund the parks in Clackamas County. It hasn't really worked. Canby hasn't been able to, you know, but the voters don't approve it. So a lot of our parks are underdeveloped, and it's hard to do maintenance. Things like Japanese knotweed, English ivy, Himalayan blackberry, they just grow over everything. You spray, it comes back, you know? So we got cottonwoods falling over with English ivy on them, and the same kind of thing on 99. When they cut down those trees, we got ivy climbing up everything. So those trees will fall over probably because they're already spindly. I'm an arborist. So, yeah, you guys run a really serious consent agenda and everything, so I appreciate that. I know it's a business meeting. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about culture too in Canby, our experience in Clackamas County. We have a three-year-old, and we're just not sure if we're going to stay put. We're thinking about moving. You know, my wife volunteered with Bridging Cultures, a great organization. Give them money. They have volunteers who teach English classes. My wife said people said routinely they hear in parking lots at grocery stores, "Don't speak Spanish. Speak English. Go home. Go back to Mexico." I just wanted to raise this to your attention. Also, Black History Month is coming up. I, you know, wanted to talk a little bit about history. I see the Union upon the seal there, and I wanted to recommend one book. I forgot to bring it up, but it's by Clint Smith. It's called How the Word Is Passed, and it's a reckoning with the history of slavery in the United States. So to me, diversity, equity, inclusion goals in Clackamas County should, I think, be first and foremost. It doesn't even cost money. Thanks.
Go ahead, finish. Okay. Clint Smith, is that right?
I could talk about climate change too, but I don't want to take extra time.
Did you say Clint Smith?
Clint Smith, yeah.
I'm writing that down. Thank you very much. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming. I lived in Canby for 36 years. You can still see our family farm as you go out on Territorial Road. Don't leave Canby. They need you. Okay? Because I remember writing the first grant that the Canby Library ever had for our Hispanic population to get materials in Spanish for people. So no matter what the comments are, just bore through it, stay there. It makes the community a better place. And I also worked with the Sisters at Mount Angel when we were having housing problems for our migrant workers in that area. And I know it's hard. There are times when, and I came from an urban area, and I felt like a total outsider sometimes, but if you don't stay there and if you don't work it through, you're not going to change it. And so that's just my comment to you, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader.
One other ask, I'm sorry, Chair. When you're talking about the park system, are you talking within the city just, the city itself? Are you talking...
I used to be on the Canby Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and now I'm on the Clackamas Committee.
Okay, because I think they're two different park systems.
You're right. Knightsbridge is county. So if you guys want to talk about that, we could. I think you should open the whole lot and then trying to figure out with Tom Rigs, you know, should you charge four bucks, half rate for parking there? You know, because people, if you close the lot halfway or all the way, people are going to park on the shoulder of the road, and it's a big safety hazard.
Is this the lot by the river?
On Knightsbridge.
Yes, I'm well aware of that. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember when we made it a park. Yeah.
So you guys are spending almost 20 grand a year on maintenance for the dumpster, the porta-potties, and, you know, it's not really getting maintained. It could be great. You could spend money and make it great. Plant more trees and take out the weeds and stuff, you know? Put a pit toilet. That was in the Capitol projects. Last year, we took it out for budget reasons. So, you know, this is a time of belt tightening, but I think most citizens don't realize how little money the park's sliver of funding actually is. And a lot of the parks are self-funded, you know? We got to run them like a for-profit corporation. So it should serve a public good to have parks. So on the committee, we feel like, you know, there aren't enough resources for everything, right? But it's also hard to hire people like police and seasonal park workers.
Thank you very much. We have a couple more Commissioners here. We understand the problems involved in that. Thank you for bringing them forward. Commissioner West, you may, you may stay here.
Yeah, I want to, my comments are for you, and from your comments.
Comments, okay.
Yeah, I really want to say it's not easy to come before a board, and you've never done this, and to articulate your concerns in the community, you did a great job, and I appreciate your comments. I think it saddens every one of us to hear that we don't treat people with dignity, or not everybody in our community does. I believe that this board wants to make it clear that we want to treat every person with value and worth that's intrinsic in every human. And I'm, and I'm sorry that that happened in Canby, or that you've had, or that you've had to have had that experience, you know? Only because it fits the topic, I'll bring this up. I am openly out gay man, and I have found that it's not always easy to be a little bit different in a, in a community. And that bad people that aren't going to act appropriately kind of exist everywhere. And I, and I want to, and I guess I want to say my experience overall in Clackamas County has been where my family's been loved and accepted, but it's people like you, it's people like me, and the members of this board and members of the community that set the culture and the tone within the community. And Eric, I appreciate what you and your wife are doing, but I would kind of follow up with what Commissioner Schrader said and just say, we need good people and good families that want to set forth values in the community, and you and your wife are doing that. So I'd urge you to please consider staying because we want to make sure that you're helping to carry those values forward. And I think that overall Clackamas County does a great job, but wherever we go, we still have to make sure that we're championing the things where people feel accepted and loved and included in their communities. So that's my, I guess, my thoughts, and thank you for sharing concerns about parks.
Could I respond in...
Yes, briefly, please, sir.
Oh, there's 41 seconds for some reason up there.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to challenge you philosophically on one point. I appreciate your responses because you don't have to respond. I know that. And there are other people here, and it's, we like short meetings, right? So think about talking about the language we use with the categories we put people in. So I'm not trying to indict you for saying this, but the language of bad people and good people. Remember when Hillary Clinton, who lost the election in 2016, called 25% of people in America irredeemable deplorables? I think that was a terrible mistake. And representatives in a democracy, in a republic, need to represent everybody. And so I would hope that there are no bad people anywhere and that everybody is redeemable in one, in some way. So that's just something to think about. I have other book recommendations, but I'm going to step away.
You know, sir, you can always, we have one more Commissioner. You can always give us an email, and then we will read them, and we can continue a dialogue.
I'm sorry more people don't come into these meetings.
Well, actually, this is a packed crowd. You should see it on other days.
Yeah, but, yeah, please reach out.
Yeah, okay.
We can have 20 Zoom comments.
Yeah, whatever, three minutes, but send us an email. Yeah. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Robertson, thank you for coming in today. Thank you for your service as a member of the Clackamas County Parks Advisory Board. I was on the meeting on Tuesday with you on Zoom, and I appreciate the work that the board's doing to adjust to budgetary pressures. I heard a lot of creative ideas. I appreciate that. Also, our Clackamas County Parks in 2022 serve well over 1.4 million visitors, as I recall from your meeting, and almost a half million cars. And those parks are very well loved and used by the people of the county, and they know they can go there, have a good time, they're welcome, and they're respected in those parks. So again, thank you, and thank you to the Clackamas County Parks Advisory Committee for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer Robinson. And serious, we're serious about your email. If you'd like to send something over.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Up next, Paul Edgar. Please state your name, area of residence, and sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Paul Edgar, Oregon City. The reason why I'm here before you today is we're in a tolling situation. I'm very appreciative of Commissioner Savis and what he's doing, but there's a, they call it, what is it, a red act meeting on the 21st or 23rd? And in this meeting, this is on the tolling authority and how they're going to evaluate it. Right now, they do not consider diversion in Clackamas County a major factor. The environmental assessment right now that is being, is being rubber stamped cursorily without any real data coming up from the cities or from the county, and they're not, they don't consider it major. So if we have 50,000 or 60,000 vehicles diverting because of tolling, that's to this Mandy and all of those in the Urban Mobility Office, they don't consider that to be a major problem. But it is. We need a, it needs to be raised up. You need to make a statement. You need to empower Commissioner Savis with written words from this commission that says we demand a full environmental assessment and a major EIS. That's the only way we can get them to do their job. Right now, they don't care. They are paid soldiers to make tolling happen. Okay? That's their job. Your job is to help the citizens, the businesses, the people that cannot and will not be able to afford to pay the toll. 60% of the people in the I-205 corridor are paycheck to paycheck. They, they could be families with $150,000 income, but they've got student loans, and they've got children, and they're invested into everything, and they are barely making their house payments. And now you want to put another $500 a month bill into, into their pocket? And just think of people trying to, you have to pay a toll to get to your house? This will degrade the values of homes, the property value. This is going to, going to have a 10, 15% economic suppression of activity in Clackamas County. And Metro, the ODOT teams and all of these people do not consider it a major factor.
Thank you, Mr. Edgar. Gary, regarding the EA, what does that do? It's coming soon.
Actually, Nate, we just talked about, could you help answer that, please? We just talked about that.
Sounds like it's coming out next month.
Next month, and...
We'll have a chance to.
And sir, we are prepared. I just want to say this. I really thank you for your passion on this, and I want to thank all Commissioners' work on this tolling. Nobody has ever been denied sending a letter of anything. I have sent letters. I'm very actively engaged in the Oregon Transportation Commission. Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Scholl, and I believe Commissioner West are also very involved in this. Commissioner Schrader works on it. So we all are in agreement on everything here, and we appreciate the efforts of all Commissioners on this. We do speak with one voice on this. And, and Commissioner Savis has been very good on this issue, as all the Commissioners are. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, Mr. Edgar, thanks for being here today. Thanks for your passion about this. And also housing. I didn't, wasn't sure what Paul Edgar was going to show up and talk about today, but I know you're, those, two of our big priorities in Clackamas County, two of the many, right? But two of the top ones. I am behind. I need, I owe you a phone call on this, and I owe a number of other people, but I am so inundated with trying to get ready for all these meetings, including this morning at J-PAC and this afternoon in preparation for Monday's meeting, what you just pointed out, the 23rd, the regional, the RTAC, the Regional Tolling Advisory Committee. There's a saying, if you want to eat an elephant, it's one... There's a saying, if you want to eat an elephant, it's one bite at a time and we are doing that. This board has been very receptive and, and helpful and when we've, when I've asked or staff has asked or suggested that we send a letter here or a letter there. So we are working on this and also trying to build partnerships in the region as well. And so that puts a lot more emphasis. So it's more of a strategy, but this, we're not really at the beginning, we're certainly not anywhere near the end and we're not even in the middle of this yet. So I, I promise you that number one, I will return your call and talk to you about this in greater detail, but I am receiving phone calls and emails and stuff every day, every day on this topic. So we are resistant as much as possible and we're building partnerships. I think that, I think you might be surprised, pleasantly surprised of where this might end up here in the next 30 days.
Yeah, I would agree. Do you finish?
Yeah.
In fact, the cities of Oregon City and Westland are up in arms and I had a meeting yesterday with the mayor of Oregon City and both Paul and I have been in conversation with the new mayor of Westland and.
Excellent.
Yeah, we'll have a united front, don't worry about it. And, and just know that we hear you and we agree with you and we are not your enemy. We are your change agents. So I thank you for your advocacy on this.
One, one last comment. I was at the, this joint meeting between Oregon City and Westland and that, they are, if you, if Mayor McGriff told you, the majority on that meeting said they are ready and willing to have, file a lawsuit.
I'm very much aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Edgar.
So it is.
And we don't discuss lawsuits at this dais. Thank you very much. Up next, Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld.
Good morning, Commissioners. Long time no see. I really actually want to speak about being here last night. It was a very inspiring event. It actually went right into my dreams through the night, just, just to see the connections between so many different people speaking of and being engaged in being of service. It, whether it was the, the part about the actual vows and the pledges that were made and how that is clearly aligned with that. I got to run into several other fellow veterans and the issue around that service and how it ties and got reconnected to the breakfast from that. But, but for me, and actually hugs too, thank you. I, I appreciate that hugs get back into, to our reality. COVID has really, actually, I'm thrilled that we're back in person more than we were before and it was, it was a difficult time. But what I appreciate also is the number of diverse people that spoke about what they care about and their backgrounds, that it, so our tags, okay, it's amazing. So last night, Sherry Hall was wearing one of our tags. I found out she's an advocate for libraries, but that was right after I heard Catherine McCullen speak about her past. And then, of course, we know Martha and you and so it's like to find out how much connection we have to so much. And I really appreciate, this is the first time to ever hear you speak, I appreciate your passion and I look forward to more of that. Thelma, my, my senior, has just really been a joy to work with. This was her idea and I think it's a great idea because how else do we, I appreciate what you had say a few minutes ago, that this is a chance for us to communicate with the people who represent us and to find out where we support the issues, what are the issues and so on and so forth. And, but it also is about smoothing over. Every election, I always feel is a challenge because all the, the kinds of stuff that goes on and yet, here you are, here we are doing it. I mean, the elections and how the, the materials that get sent and what people say and so on and so forth. So it's interesting how aligned the people from Gladstone and Oak Lodge have become, whereas at one point we were on very opposite sides of that and, and see many of them last night. And I really want to thank each and every one of you for the parts you have played in helping bring the community together and being in service. In my last 16 seconds, I really just want to say that it is that process of being in service that we get to focus on what is in the best interest of our community. And thank you for your doing that part and we'll keep doing ours. This is my 30th year of testifying before this board.
Oh, dear.
It used to be only three of you in a little place down in Oregon City, but we now have speed bumps on my street.
You're going to outlive us all. I tell you, thank you very much for your advocacy. We appreciate your participation, Grover.
You're welcome, thank you.
Up next, Jan Carruthers.
That guy looks familiar to me.
You think?
Yeah.
Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, thank you. I'm Jan Carruthers. I live in Jennings Lodge. For those of you who don't know, I'm married to him. That's a joke there. I'm part of the Oak Lodge Library Advocacy Project and I've been an active user of our entire library system for over 31 years. I want to commend the district, the commission, the staffs, the individual library boards for creating a wonderful library system. There's two branches of our library system that, as you well know, are well, well ready for updating and replacements, the Oak Lodge Library and the Gladstone Library, which thanks to an agreement, will be one library, two branches. And in my career as a trainer, speaker, coach, I have used our libraries, some people would say excessively, I'm a power user of the library and I'm so proud and excited by the resources of the entire system. And the staff of our library, the one I refer to, is a terrific staff. They have so much creativity and so much capacity and yet their facilities do not really allow them to reach out. And I know you know this and I'm just kind of remembering and reminding how much happens in those teeny little spaces, a seed library, terrific resource, research librarians, classes, study halls, ongoing children's programs, and yet if they had the space to be what they could be, so much would be available. I've had the luxury of transportation and resources, I can use any branch of any library system, but the children and the families and the seniors in our neighborhoods can't. So I'm just here to commend you for your support already and to also tell you how proud and excited I am going to be when I see the plaque that this commission is the commission that actually takes it to the finish line. So that we have a park, a community center of historic value and a brand new library in our community and a brand new library branch, that we had a ceremony to open the sign for the Gladstone Library. It will happen and I am believing that it will happen this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Up next, Ms. Blackmore. Please come forward, introduce yourself and you have.
I guess about the pronunciation.
You have three minutes to talk about whatever you want.
I'm Anita Blackmore from Oak Grove and I didn't coordinate my comments with Jan, so it's a little repetitious, but hello, Commissioners and Chair Smith and staff. And I know you see and hear from library advocates on a regular basis, though many library advocates aren't visible at BCC meetings because they're at work or because they choose to love and support our libraries by spending time in them, bringing their children to them, accessing eBooks from home or doing library volunteer work, among other things. One of the best things about a 21st century library is that it can have multiple imaginative and innovative functions. A modern library can serve as a gathering place, a place to take classes and a place to see multicultural events geared to all ages. In other words, our libraries set a tone for our communities, they're about a lot more than books. For example, the Oak Lodge and Gladstone Libraries have very popular seed libraries for vegetables and flower seeds. Oak Lodge offers musical events. The two branches offer storytime for kids raising, ranging from Japanese taiko drumming to kids comedy. When the two new branches are built, they will be able to offer even more enrichments to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Up next, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, is it Havela Ferschweiler?
Yes.
And you know, you have perfect writing.
I've never seen anyone who's ever done it right the first time.
And you just print like perfectly here, yes.
Well, I have to with a name like that.
Please introduce yourself and your area of residence.
My name is Havela Ferschweiler and I live in unincorporated Clackamas County, but basically Oak Lodge area. So thank you for letting me speak today. I am a mother of three. I have twins that are 12 and a 10-year-old and I'm here in support of our library and the funding for the library. And we have, we are also mega users of our library system. We do the cultural passes, which we love, to be able to, to give the kids opportunities to open their eyes to different Chinese gardens and all the good things that come that we have in our city. We have lived in our home for 20 years this summer and we have waited for 20 years for a new library. And my kids actually were involved in the library planning process and went to the meetings and did the little videos and had all the fun. I want them to be able to see this. They're, you know, 12 and 10 now, I want this to happen. We are, this community is owed this. We need this library. We, whenever we have gone to, we were very involved in Girl Scouts and lots of different activities and when we go to Sunnyside and we see their library and we say, whoa, look at the opportunities that they have over there. We need that in Oak Lodge for our community. It's time for us to have the opportunities, to have the rooms that are big enough, the parking that's available, that's short in our library here. I also agree, we have an amazing staff at our library and I love them and I would love to see it become a space. So many people in our community and in Oak Lodge, they all go to the lighting library because we just don't have the facilities. And like I said, it's an equity issue. We have it in Sunnyside, we have it in letting, we don't have it in our community and it's time. So please make this the year that we find the funding for this and that we, it really is going to be such an amazing change for our community, I think. And I can't wait to see it. And, and it will allow for, again, those cultural passes, all the different, my kids have gone to the taiko drumming and all the, the reptile shows, it, they're just packed in there, they're just packed. And I, I brought them even when they were tiny in, in, in my strollers and there are six spots at that, that place right now. It is hard. It's challenging to use. I would love to see something that's big enough, that everybody can enjoy, that's good for families. We have them in our community. Our community is really changing and, and needs, and needs a library that keeps up with it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Thelma Hagan Miller. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes. Anybody else have a card they want to turn in while we're waiting? Thank you, Tony. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Thelma Hagan Miller. I am here today as a member of OKLA, the Oak Lodge Community Library Advocates. Mr. West, we are one component of the fire hose you recognize is coming at you. A bit about myself, I have been involved with many successful projects in the North Clackamas County and specifically the Oak Grove area. We now have streetlights on McLaughlin Boulevard in the unincorporated area between the city of Milwaukee and the city of Gladstone because of a small group of citizens that lobbied the businesses to join the lighting district of the county. That was successful and now it's a pleasure to drive on a nasty winter evening when I go mostly to the Elks Lodge, but I can see my way because eyesight at night nasty. I was involved in the trolley trail, you all know that. Well, Mr. West might not know that, but a very heavily used kind of stripe through our community that's very safe and I am very proud of the trolley trail. The Oak Lodge Water Service is becoming an authority. I'm the one that brought up to the board of that entity that something was happening in the community and they needed to do this and they followed through and did it and I'm proud of that. And the transfer of the Concord property from the school district to the North Clackamas Parks and Rec District. I lobbied the school district to not sell that property to a private individual to be developed in whatever way they would do it. I wanted it kept in the public hands because that's where my kids went to school. And I'm now 90 years old and I want to see the Concord Property Redevelopment Project completed with a separate park, library and cultural community center and much more. The community deserves it. We're the lowest income community in the county and we are looking forward to something that will make us very proud and have a lot of meeting rooms in it so that we can have public meetings because those are becoming scarce with COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Thelma. That is all of the blue cards I have. Tony, we will open it up to communication via Zoom.
Good morning. I will begin with Mr. Les Poole. Mr. Poole, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Good morning. Great to see my good friend Thelma Hagan Miller and another associate of mine, Paul Edgar, here today. They've been advocates for our area and on key issues for a long time, as I have been. Welcome aboard, Ben. I'm, I'm pleased that you won the election and frankly, the elections are always, as I say, the best polling one could ever ask for. There's a lot of polling done, but when you look at the outcome of an election, that's where the rubber meets the road. And in spite of being outspent and, you know, having a formidable incumbent that you've replaced, there's a, there's a burden that comes with that and the burden is, I believe, most folks are looking for more fiscal accountability, careful spending and prioritization on our county rather than prioritization of facilitating some of the things that come out of Salem or for Metro, one of which, of course, is tolling. And in the conversations about tolling, some, some of the folks in the room, certainly Commissioner Savas, are aware that, I've been in front of you folks in Gladstone and Metro, ODOT, I've been at the HB 2017 hearing where tolling was first authorized. So I've been after this for five years and I knew the time would come when the public would be much more aware of what was going on. And why hasn't the public been as up in arms until recently? Well, I place that squarely on the shoulders of ODOT. And trust in ODOT, faith in ODOT is waning with each passing day. I want to clarify one thing about tolling and that is tolling us to use existing lanes and putting the money into the imaginary pit or some type of a vague fund is. and putting the money into the imaginary pit or some type of a vague fund is not authorized by the Federal Transportation Administration. ODOT has the authorization to install a section of tolling in the region, operate it for two years as a pilot project, and then go back to the federal government for final approval. One of the things that Mr. Edgar didn't mention is that if a petition, statewide petition, meets the requirements and eventually is passed by the voters in November of 2024, it would require a vote. So my point's very simple. Folks need to go to, to vote before tolls. Let's get that petition out there, get it on the ballot, and require a public vote before tolling is imposed on us. This is far from a done deal. And I don't mean to sound cynical, but the story changes so much from ODOT that if, it's just unconscionable. And I would invite everyone to-
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Poole. We need to move on.
A lot of time. Well, thank you for, for your time.
You bet. Tony, up next.
Next up will be Mr. Bill Weir. Mr. Weir, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Bill Weir, Damascus. I want to quote from the BCC homepage, quote, "Working together, the board is charged with taking action in the best interest of the county and its constituent. Commissioners set county policies, establish departmental budgets, and have the right to send countywide measures to the ballot. During a regular week, commissioners typically take action at policy sessions or the weekly business meeting," unquote. Another, I would add, is being available to listen to and respond to citizens' testimony. When a commissioner is noticeably continually absent from county weekly meetings to attend out-of-state national meetings and conventions, it does not necessarily serve the interests of the Clackamas County taxpayers. Being available by phone for a vote is insufficient for the thoughtful group discussions that go on. Some ideas I have is limit travel expense for each commissioner during each budget cycle. Any out-of-state meetings, conventions that offer Zoom, Zoom will take preference. Any out-of-state meetings, conventions that will be attended by a commissioner will be placed on the BCC website with the full agenda before the event. Require that written reports about how the out-of-state meeting was worth the time away from required commissioners' duties and the taxpayer expense. The report should include practical knowledge learned that can be applied to the current pressing county issues, that it was in the best interest of the county and its constituents. A copy or rehash of the schedule doesn't qualify as a report. Required written reports should be submitted within 10 working days after returning from out-of-state. The report should be published on the BCC website for the benefit of the citizens. Thank you.
Anybody else, Tony?
That is the end of my list, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you very much. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I wanted to respond to the earlier folks that spoke today, particularly Thelma's comments about libraries, and want to just reflect a little bit because you just touched on something that's really core for one of the reasons I'm so, been such an advocate for this, and that is, and Thelma's right, there is a lot of poverty in the area of Clackamas County, and particularly the area in which these libraries are lacking. There's a lot of census tracts where children, 100% of children are in poverty. That's pretty striking. It's a striking statistic. I have not, since the census tract has been completed, gone back and looked and see if that's worsened. I assume it has, but I don't know for certain, and see if there's new areas now that are, you know, going further in decline. But when I was a kid, I grew up in a poor environment, and the only place I could go and do my homework and study was at the library. It was too noisy in my house. I was the oldest of seven kids, and my younger siblings and my mom babysat for extra income. We had 10 extra people, kids, sometimes 20, a house of, it was very noisy. And the only escape to study, the resource for books, the place of quiet, was libraries. And had it not been for that, I don't think I would be here today. I'm pretty confident of that. But I just think about when it comes to people in poverty, especially children, and I mentioned this in my comments last night, that, that really strikes to the core, and I just, you know, knowing that to complete this would be fantastic, give a lot of children some advantages. You know, it's interesting to hear Thelma say her kids went to school there. My kids went to school in the same area. Now they're in their 30s, they're successful, so my kids won't be able to take advantage of this. Perhaps if I'm retired, I could spend more time at the library. But I, I really appreciate you all being here and being advocates for this, and frankly, I think we're really being advocates for those underserved people, kids and children. So a better future for them is a stronger future for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Gary, what's up next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use my time to share good news about our county programs and our staff. Today, I'd like to recognize Juvenile Counselor Jana Weissman from our county's juvenile department, who received an award from Safety Compass Oregon, a nonprofit that provides advocacy services for survivors of commercial sexual exploitation in Clackamas, Marion, and Washington Counties. Jana was recognized with an Innovation and Juvenile Justice Award by Safety Compass Oregon. With the award, the CEO of that organization wrote, "Since the early days of the local anti-trafficking movement, Jana Weissman has been a visionary who has worked tirelessly on behalf of commercially sexually exploited youth. She has always been inclusive, collaborative, professional, and hardworking. We are forever grateful for Jana's contributions to the field and for the entire Clackamas County Juvenile Department for its commitment to collaborating with advocacy groups like Safety Compass to offer culturally specific services to survivors." So congratulations to Jana and our juvenile team, and just another example of the amazing work our employees do on your behalf, Commissioners, for the public of the county. That's my report today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next is Commissioner Communication. Commissioners, we are due to attend a Citizens Award Luncheon today at 11:30. It takes us about 15 minutes to get there. So we all have talked a lot this week about a lot of stuff, including last night. Not that I don't enjoy your comments, but I would like you, if you would, please limit them to about one minute. If we do two minutes, that's 10 minutes, and we're going to be scrambling out of here. So. Up first for this is Commissioner West.
Thank you, Chair. I am dressed like this at this meeting because I'm going to be hanging out with our transportation around some construction sites and maybe getting a little dirty today. So normally, I would not be in a ball cap and a fleece at a commission meeting, so please excuse that, but I have been getting up and running. I've spent quite a few hours with different departments already and still getting familiar with all those different departments. As Thelma alluded to, yes, I am at the other end of the fire hose, but you should all know I'm very thirsty, so I will try to absorb as much of it as I can. That's all I have to say. I, you guys have heard me blather on a lot this last week, so I will, for brevity's sake, which I'm not good at, I will, I'll end with that.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Well, thank you, folks, for coming today. It's always a pleasure to see you and hear your advocacy for libraries. You know, that's the thing that got me involved to start with in Camby, by the way, when I was a young mother. And we had a library in the basement of a retail building, and I just thought, we've got to do something about this. So we will, we will figure out a way. I think we're going to have to problem solve, and I will talk to my colleagues here about some, and our administrator, about some potential ideas I'm thinking through that we can bridge the gap in funding. Gary, it used to be $3 million, and now it's bought up to $10 million, something like that?
About an $8 million gap for both the Gladstone and Oak Lodge libraries.
So we're going to have to problem solve, and it's nobody's fault. It's because we had the heat dome, it's because we had COVID, it's because inflation got out of control. I hope Congress doesn't default on the treasury debt. That will put us all in such a world of hurt. It'll be like England when, when their economy had an issue and they're in a crash. We can't have that. We can't have that happen. So I would ask you as colleagues and friends to continue to work. I do, I'm going to get the next Eldoc meeting on my schedule, Paul. I know you always go to those. I'm going to do my best to problem solve and find solutions because I do agree with you that libraries are the heart of the community. And if I have to do, if I have to do community building with you to make this happen, I will do so. And I know, I think all our colleagues would do that. We've got to figure out what that community building operation's going to be because of the gap that we're going to be dealing with. I think we can do it. I think there's always a way. We can't be negative. We just got to bore through and figure it out. So that's kind of where I am with that. I won't, did want to share a couple of things. Also, I want to thank Gary. We have, we have a new, I know, Commissioner's timing me, we have a new Economic Development Director. I'm looking forward to working with her. I have some grants from the Commerce Deputy Secretary that would be great to look at. There's a new SBA Veteran Small Business Certification Program. With that kind of staffing, we'll be able to move ahead and get all the information we need to really move that. I also attended our Workforce Board meeting this morning. We're, you know, I am the, I am the, I'm the person who is the liaison, and I will give you an update on that in the future because we have to be brief. That's about as good as I can do. I'm sorry.
You're doing fine. You took up your time and Commissioner West's time.
Oh, no. [laughter] Problem Commissioner.
Getting both of us to be brief, now that's a miracle, so.
I know.
Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, Chair Earl, I did not honestly, I'm not even ready, frankly, to talk about this. I didn't really think we would be talking about this, but I want to, I need, I think I need to correct something right out of the get-go. Number one is that I believe we already have solved, and staff has, and we have worked to solve the funding gap for the libraries. The train's been on the tracks for the funding, and we knew how we were going to do it. Now, how specifically staff wanted to say whether we do it, you know, with general fund from here or general fund from there, or reserves, whatever, but, but I want to just say that that, that has been figured out, and the train's been on that track, and we've assured the community, and Gary has, you know, attended some of those meetings and assured everyone, and some of those people here are here in this room, so I don't want them to be alarmed today by the comments. I also want to talk about the funding gap of $3 million. I didn't really think that would even come up. But, you know, the folks out, some of the folks here in this room were, were very pointed in sharing with the previous administrator that the calculation of $3 million was an error in the first place. We knew what the going rate was for libraries or buildings and the construction rate was in the industry, and we pointed that out, and there's documents and emails exchanges between myself, others, and the administrator that affect. So we knew it was going to be more, and Gary, you acknowledge that, and I appreciate that. So that $3 million number, boy, I tell you, all that does is, all that does is bring back bad memories of saying, wait a minute. And at least towards the end, Administrator Krupp did say, you know, whatever the number is, we're going to, we're going to build these libraries. So I just want to just, don't want to alarm anyone right now. So I'll, I'll leave that, I'll leave that alone for now.
I've got some ideas.
Well, we, staff has given some good ideas, and I heard them from Gary, and, you know, we've got, I was, I was, you know, I think what they presented, you know, for, you know, using reserves or whatnot, or one-time, one-time funding is probably the lowest-cost way to get it done. So I think, you know, again, there's been no board action to take the train off the tracks. I just want to just say that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I really want to impress upon, upon everyone here in this room, no one's voted to take the train off the tracks.
No.
The timelines can be met, and everyone else. If there's going to be an action, I want to be transparent about it, and I want everyone to be forthcoming if there's an effort to take this train off the tracks. Thank you.
Oh, that's not it. That's why I said what I said today because I'm trying to figure out how to keep us on the track with you, sir, and you know that because we're friends and colleagues.
I just want to make sure, but I, you know, I don't want people to read into something that's, that's, it's just.
Two minutes and 40 seconds. Okay. Up next, Commissioner Schaal.
Okay. Good morning, Clackamas County. It's been my observation that there's 434,000 people in this county and 435,000 library advocates. On drugs, children 13 and younger are dying of fentanyl poisoning at a faster rate than any age group in America, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Killer drugs are creeping closer to our kids every day. Several schools in the paper this morning are putting in naloxone or the brand name Narcan into schools to start the breathing again for kids that come in contact with this killer drug. We have failed our kids and their security. Teenagers, several of them in our area, have died of fentanyl overdose. The word's not getting down to the kids of the danger of this drug. Every legislator, every parent, every school teacher must be involved in a campaign to educate our kids. Contact U.S. Congress, demand our borders be secured and all points of entry be secured. Increase the fight against the cartels that are pushing these drugs into our county. And please see the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office website for a very informative video that'll help parents teach their childrens how to avoid and recognize this killer drug. And just the day before yesterday, in a middle school in Yamhill County, a sheriff and two children had to go to the hospital because of exposure to fentanyl. I'm going to hold my comments on taxes in Oregon, greenhouse gases, and comments on toll, tolling and Metro's ideas to implement some of their policies until next week. But I do want to comment on tolling briefly. Everybody needs to understand that tolling would be an unending tax, an inefficient tax, a horrible upset to our lives, our neighborhood streets, and our pocketbooks, and to our people and families. Fight it today. See votebefore tolls.org, get involved, sign the petition, and be a participant in pushing back this threat. And one final comment. We who live in a free-market society believe that the growth, prosperity, and ultimately human fulfillment are created by efforts from the bottom up, not the government down. Only when the human spirit is allowed to invent and create, only when individuals are given a personal stake in deciding economic policies and benefiting from their success, only then can societies remain alive, dynamic, prosperous, sustainable, and free. Thank you, Clackamas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaal. Yes, last night was a very good event, and I was very, very, very much appreciative, you don't know how much, because when Commissioner Schaal and I came on as Commissioners in January of 2021, we spoke into a camera in an empty room for our inaugural ceremony. That was not pleasant. However, last night was very pleasant. Regarding funding to the libraries, I'm going to caution any Commissioners sitting here quoting figures. Those construction figures are two years old. So let's please not raise expectations on costs until we get our final costs on that. We do have a policy session coming forward where it will be very public. We will discuss at that time, hopefully, what those numbers are and how we're going to solve the funding gap. Commissioners, we need to hit the road. If you want to spend a few minutes talking to our folks in the audience, I'm going to go ahead and cut my comments short. Thank you all for coming. See no further business. Before this commission, we are adjourned.